Twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen is now in session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, Carmen, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Kelwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Finesse.
Here. Let the record reflect nine present, zero absent. All righty, moving on to reading of the minutes.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
Make the motion to accept the minutes from July tenth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, to accept the minutes of July tenth, two thousand seventeen. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in paper?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All righty, claims.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims July fifth through July nineteenth for council meeting July twenty-four, two thousand seventeen. Beginning of the claims dated seven-ten-seventeen and ending of the claims dated seven-nineteen-seventeen, claim number four-one-nine-two through claim number four-five-two-five, for a total of twelve million, seven hundred seventy-six thousand, nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty-one cents. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, to accept the claims from July fifth through July nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
About a month ago, we polled claim thirty-five ninety-seven for five thousand dollars to Ice Miller, and we requested that the judge show up, and she couldn't make the last meeting. I see she's here from Saint John tonight, so I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and go ahead and ask the questions that the council wanted her here for. Madam Chairlady.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Higgs, to suspend the rules to, for Judge Jorgensen to address the council. Any discussion?
Question.
Yes, Councilman.
Should that be taken up under new unfinished business unless you're planning on putting that claim back in to be approved for tonight? We're just approving regular claims.
It's up to you guys. I mean, if she gives us, I mean-
Madam President.
The opportunity to ask her the questions we want, if we can make her wait the whole meeting or we can do it now.
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I think the purpose of Councilman Warple requesting the judge to stand before us is to give her, give us clarification as to why the five thousand dollars was presented as a claim, and it also gives her an opportunity to ask any questions and so we can amend it in at this meeting so it can be paid.
Understood. Any further discussion? Carmen, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Finesse.
Yes. Suspension of the rules passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Your Honor, if you'd like. Again, thank you for appearing. I know it's late, but I'm-
I'm happy, I'm happy to appear always to answer any question.
This claim for thirty-five ninety-seven caught my attention because it was to the firm of Ice Miller. It was a five thousand dollar claim, and it was on our list of claims two meetings in a row. And when I polled the claim, it just said, "For services rendered." And number one, originally, when we polled the claim, the stories hadn't appeared in the newspaper that there was a possible threat of litigation against this council, that we would in fact be paying to be sued. And I'm just, can you clarify what this is for? And would you be willing to go on the record and state to this council that you have no intentions of suing this council over the court?
So that was kind of a mixed bag of questions there, so if you won't mind-
I'm long-winded.
That's okay. I'll break it apart as best that I can. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak to the council. I am always and have always been happy to speak with the council. As you recall, when I appeared before you in the past, when we were discussing the future of the court, I tried to keep a neutral stance on the issue of whether the city of Hammond needed a court. I was always available to answer questions and provide information regarding the court's operation and budget in an attempt to aid you all in making a very difficult decision. But I was always very careful to be neutral as to whether or not the city of Hammond should have a court, because it is your power, it has always been within your power to abolish and establish courts. Today, I'm here for a different reason, because the powers that surround everything from abolishing, from establishing the court to abolishing the court reside with me and within the, in the branch of the judiciary. The court has made multiple attempts to meet with city officials to give the city an opportunity to weigh in on the orderly transition of cases that are under the court's authority. And thus far, the city has been fighting to totally control this process and has really been unwilling to have any meaningful functional conversations with me about the transition of cases out of the court. While I have total discretion as to whether or not to hire legal counsel, as a courtesy to the city, I discussed the need to hire legal counsel and why, and advised in that process why I was hiring legal counsel. I even provided the city with the Ice Miller Retainer Agreement, which clearly states that Ice Miller has been retained to assist with strategic legal representation regarding the planning for the decommissioning of the Hammond City Court. And that agreement goes on further to state that the agreement will absolutely not cover any litigation initiatives whatsoever. So I can tell you with a hundred percent certainty, the invoice before you does not cover litigation costs. And so why was the, why, why did we hire, why did the court need to retain an attorney? I can tell you that the ordinance that the council drafted is overly simplistic. The mayor's office continues to try to function in a capacity of the judicial branch of government, which is inappropriate. And I have a constitutional mandated duty to ensure that the Hammond City has access to the court-appointed judge during my term. And I'm concerned what happens to the city, if city residents, if eighty-five percent of infraction cases currently beheld here in the city are now heard in Crown Point. The ordinance itself takes up less than one page, but sets to wind down one of the biggest courts, biggest city courts in the city of Hammond. The ordinance calls for clerk Golick, in his discretion, when to stop, when to decide when to stop accepting civil cases. I believe clerk Golick knows he doesn't have the authority to stop taking civil cases. That, that authority doesn't reside with the clerk, it resides with the judge. The ordinance called for the mayor to instruct the police department to start filing in Crown Point, which is fine, but it was silent, as it should have been silent, on the thirty thousand cases still open in the court. There are a lot of complicated issues around, surrounding those cases for which the court needs legal advice. Mr. Warple. It looks like you have a follow-up, but I'm still answering your first question.
Go ahead.
Okay. When I stood in front of you before, back, back when the council was first deciding whether or not to abolish a court, you said to me, "Hey, we have to vote, or let's vote on it now, let's abolish it, and then we'll work through the remaining, remaining details later. We'll come up with an idea of what ordinance court looks like." So, so I felt like there was some acknowledgement that, that how to get to A to B was unclear and that the city would work with the court, with the courts making the decisions on how to wind the court down, that we would work together to accomplish those goals. And I specifically remember saying to you, "You know what? I'd rather work through that stuff now before you vote to abolish the court, so that we don't try to close the barn door after all of the horses are out." And that's basically exactly what's happened now. We're finding, now we're finding that eighty-five percent of infraction cases are going to be heard in, in Crown Point. We should have found that out before the decisions were made to open the court. There was, before decisions were made to close the court. There were a lot of fuzzy, fuzzy math numbers about how much does the court make and how much does the court cost. I think, and I have a report that I can give you, the 2016 report for court expenses. One of the great ideas would be to keep infractions, keep infractions and ordinances here while continuing to have misdemeanors in Crown Point. The clerk indicated to me he could substantially reduce his staff if we structured it that way. I could substantially reduce the court's budget, and the vast majority of the nine hundred, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand that the court brought into the city of Hammond would stay, because only like a hundred and some thousand of that is related to misdemeanors. So there are a lot of discussions about the way to structure this, you know, that would be best for the city of Hammond. Also, too, as I sent to you in a, in a letter a couple weeks ago, was the proposal that the, the cases be heard here during my term as, and I have a, a meeting with Judge Para to discuss that idea further, to have the cases heard by, here by me as a commissioner for Lake County instead of as a Hammond City Court judge. Because again, my concern is that I was appointed until December thirty-first of two thousand nineteen, and that I have a constitutional obligation to the, to the residents of Hammond. So to answer your, the, the heart of what your question was, I hired legal counsel. It's for fifteen thousand dollars is what it actually cost. You'll get three invoices of five thousand dollars each. That comes out to just over seven hundred dollars from now until December thirty-first of eighteen, seven hundred dollars a month for the court to have legal advice on how to uphold my constitutional obligations as I wind down the busiest city court in the state of Indiana. If, if any of these matters come to litigation, it was not handled in this agreement. So the purpose of the draft complaint that was distributed to you was after multiple attempts were made to meet with the mayor to discuss the functional practicalities of winding down the court, and I could not get a meeting. Could not.
Respectfully, Your Honor, the, the thing that bothers me is, I'm looking at a five thousand dollar bill.
It's really a fifteen thousand dollar bill.
Well, thank you for letting us know that now.
Yeah.
For what, if the city's not cooperating and, and they're winding it down as you say, have they-
Because the city can't wind down the thirty cases already filed in the court.
Well, has, is this a retainer, or is this for hours' bill?
No. So no, that's another, and again, I provided a copy of the full agreement to the Controller's Office. It's a fifteen thousand dollar flat fee. They're working at a grossly discounted rate. It comes down to seven, if you, if you, if you did it on a monthly basis, it comes down to seven hundred dollars a month for Ice Miller to advise the court on issues that currently exist, that will exist in the, in the, over the next month as we seek to transition thirty thousand cases out of this court.
Okay. Again, one of my colleagues just said, "Could we get a copy of that agreement, number one?" And number two, I guess what you're telling me is, this thing that was sent to us about litigation was a bluff?
Well, I wouldn't use the word bluff, but I would say-
Was it a threat?
The draft complaint that you referred to-
Was it a threat?
The draft complaint that you referred to was yet another attempt in a series of multiple attempts to start meaningful conversations, and it looked like it worked because I am standing here. So I, up until today-
But-
I wasn't able to get anyone to text me. So was it a threat? You know, that's, that's a tricky question. I still at every turn expect for all of us to work together.
Well, ma'am, Your Honor, we've already, I, the fact that the court is closing has already been voted on and done and over with.
Yes, yes.
I don't, I mean, I've heard a lot about what we should or shouldn't be doing about that issue.
I'm sure you-
I mean, I guess I'm specifically asking you, was this a bluff? Was it a threat?
No, it was to say that it's time for the two parties, for the city and the court, to have meaningful conversations so that the city can articulate to the court how it's planning to handle it. Because again, I am the one with the constitutional obligation to run the judicial branch in Hammond right now.
So do we have any guarantees that at no point-
Why, why, would you guarantee me at no point-
I'm a Hammond resident, and I wouldn't appreciate a Saint John resident suing myself, is what it boils down to, Your Honor.
Are you willing to commit to the court that you'll stop interfering in the judicial branch? Are you willing to commit to the court that you'll never sue the judge? Are you willing to commit any of those things to the court? That's a ridiculous question, to be, to be fair. No one, no one's-
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I think the appropriate way to handle this matter is to simply express your concerns, and it's clear to me that you have a passion for the job that you're doing as judge of the city. I understand the fact that you don't live in the city of Hammond. I voted, me personally, I voted against closing the court, because I feel it is very important to our, not just me, but the entire city of Hammond. However, my colleagues chose to close the court. But at some point, I would hope and pray that it somehow, if God were willing, that it will somehow remain in our city. It is so important, and seeing that a number of people don't have the resources, our ways and means of getting to Crown Point, it's just scary. And I hear people all the time telling me, "How am I going to get to Crown Point? How am I, how am I going to do this? How am I going to do that?" But the fact still remains, I understand your, your point clear, you're just simply saying that you have a judicial obligation to make sure that the court is ran efficiently to the end of the year, and that you want to make sure that everything is being handled in the proper way. That's, I hear that.
That's absolutely correct. And if, if the, if the draft complaint had attached the letter, it, well, the letter, the, the cover letter to the draft complaint was, again, I could read it in relative part, but it was, you know, we still haven't, this is, this was attached to that complaint. "We still have not heard any more from you or the mayor's office in response to our requests for meetings and discussions regarding the wind down of the court." As I have articulated, Judge Jorgensen has a right and a duty as the presiding judge of the court to ensure that this process is done consistent with justice and good and maced administration of justice. And goes, to litigate over this is not our goal. It's never been our goal. Do I want that? Absolutely not. So, no, that would be the absolute, to me, the absolute worst case scenario, the absolute worst result, and it would represent a total breakdown of any ability to communicate. And I can tell you for one, I will never stop communicating. So you could ask me to come here every single day, and I will be here every single day talking to you about it. So as long as somebody's going to talk to me on the other side of the table, you know, it, the, it serves the residents of Hammond for the, for, for the judiciary to get advice from the city on, on the proper wind down of the thirty thousand cases that are still open, on the structuring of an ordinance court, on all sorts of, sorts of issues that the, the city has intentionally excluded me from.
Well, I'm-
Councilman Warple.
I'm sorry, I'm listening, but you started, before you read your opening statement, you started with saying, "I would never sue to close this court." Then I asked you if that's what you-
I don't recall saying, I said it would never be-
I don't know the exact words. It was, it would never be your intention to?
Never.
Is that option still available to you, is what I'm asking you? Is, is that something that you will, that you will ask this council to sue itself?
Madam Chairman.
I don't know that that's appropriate.
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Torres.
My understanding of what you're saying, and I don't have that document, that litigation in front of me, but you never intended to litigate, but all you want is participation in winding down the court.
That is absolutely correct, Mr. Torres.
Since this court, I mean, since this council voted to, to abolish it, all you want, the cities or another are doing it for you. And since you are the appointed judge and legal judge and head of our, head judiciary system for two years, you just want to do your job.
That is correct.
And, and that's all, that's all it is.
Yes.
You want to participate because you feel, and, and obviously, there's some laws that say that the judge is entitled, since you, since this council voted to abolish the court, that is your job to wind it down, not nobody else's.
That is-
And you're willing to do that.
Yes, that is correct.
And that's, I, I find that simple to understand myself, so.
Madam President.
Yes, was that Councilman Higgs?
I, I certainly can't speak for anyone else. I wish I had the resources and the tools to help you, assist you in those efforts. However, I would hope that you coming before the council, and the mayor is here, and he is over the city in his executive branch of government, and we would hope that somehow or another you, you all can come together in a happy medium and do what's necessary for the residents of this city.
That is certain, certainly my hope, my hope as well. I think when you spoke a few minutes ago, you commented about the hearing about people who don't have the means to get back and forth to Crown Point. I know at the last meeting, it was said something like ninety percent of people will pay online. The reason I probably believed that before I spent almost the last year adjudicating thousands of cases now in Hammond City Court. And what I can tell you, and I welcome any of you to come in and sit in court for a couple hours, like this week on Thursday or Friday or anytime, and, and what you will find is that so much of it is compliance checks. It is somebody who doesn't have insurance, somebody whose license either doesn't have one or is suspended, along with the infraction. So, so many of the things that we're doing in the court aren't really covered by, aren't really covered by the ability to pay online. If you, if you are pulled over for driving without insurance, if you pay that online, your license is suspended for six months to two years automatically by the Bureau of Motor Vehicles for your having pled guilty to, to driving without insurance. So the vast majority of people who are coming in are asking for extensions to pay. They can't pay online, they want to plead liable to the ticket, but they ask the court for ninety days to pay. You can't do any of those things online. And, and-
Madam Chairwoman.
So I would say with certainty, and I could actually sit in court and do a tally mark any day of the week that you want and tell you what percentage of the people in a typical court day would pay their ticket online. But I would, I would argue at this point, it's actually closer to the reverse of what you're saying. More like eighty to ninety percent of the people are unable to pay online.
Madam Chairwoman.
Councilman Warple.
Getting back to the claim, have they done any work on your behalf as of right now? I mean, I'm looking, again, I'm looking-
There are countless open issues that, that you-
I'm looking at a draft complaint that looks like a lawsuit. And basically, what I read in the paper was, "Yeah, I sent it, but hold on, never mind."
I think what you read in the paper was extremely accurate.
I've seen the actual-
No one ever wants to litigate, and I would-
And why did I receive something that was drafted like a lawsuit?
Because I couldn't get anyone to communicate with me. And it seems like, for good or for bad, we're communicating now, so let's get this thing done together.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I have a question for you, Judge.
Yes, sir.
How much revenue did the court generate?
Well, I can actually, I brought copies for you of that report. The, the, the court generated one point two-five million that went to the state, three hundred and twenty-one thousand that went to the county, and nine hundred and sixty-five thousand that stayed in the city of Hammond. And here's the revenue on court, court revenue numbers. I printed a copy for all of you. This, this report is correct, it's from 2016. I think one of the problems in our initial discussions about court revenue, and I think that, a version of that report was held up in court, in, in this council meeting as bogus numbers back then, and I would say that's probably pretty accurate, because before I got here, the report was had, was riddled with errors. The 2015 report was virtually meaningless. This report has been done according to reporting standards and accurately reflects court revenue in every single category. Categories were left out in the 2015 report, specifically all ordinance money was left out of the 2015 report. This 2016 report is very, very accurate. And you could, if you go to the last page, it accounts for all court revenue, what was to the city, and I, probably, you probably need one more copy.
I probably need more, more, some glasses, I can see.
I have, oh, yes. Do you want to borrow mine? So if you flip to the last page, it shows state-level funds, one point two million, county-level funds, three hundred thousand, and city-town funds, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars. So that is very, very accurate.
Okay, Madam Chairwoman.
Yes.
I'll just say this, I guess I'll, I'm not going to move to put this claim back in, because I guess I'll find out, I'll go ahead and move to put it back in when I find out whether or not we're going to get sued. I don't want to relitigate.
You don't have-
I don't want to relit, ma'am, ma'am, I'm, Your Honor, I'm talking now.
Yes.
I don't want to relitigate what we did in January, so I make a motion, we go back to regular order of business.
Before you, before you consider that motion, I would say this, is that, again, you are the legislative branch, I am the judicial branch, I have mandate powers, and if I feel the court needs an attorney, the court's going to get an attorney. And statements like that show that you don't understand the structure of government entities and what your role is versus what my role is. And I have constitutional obligations to, to my role. So you can threaten me about residency, you can do all of those things, and I still come back with my handout trying to talk to everybody. The judiciary is not going to be threatened, it just doesn't work that way.
Well, we're the financial body, and it's my responsibility-
I have my own budget, I have my own budget. The court operates under its own budget, and I have the same powers.
Point of order, point of order, point of order.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
We have my colleague and a judge speaking at the same time, that's not helpful to none of us, and there is a motion on the floor.
Well, thank you very much, Councilman Higgs.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor, motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Rakos, to return to the regular order of business. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in, roll call vote, please. Carmen.
Markovich. Spitali. Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
No.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Finesse.
Yes. One, two, three.
Thank you for your time.
What was the question?
Councilman Markovich.
Is that in favor, one opposed, and to return to the regular order of business?
Yes.
Okay, eight in favor, one opposed. Motion carries. Okay, so we have before us a motion by Councilman Markovich and second by Councilman Higgs, I believe it was, to accept the claims from July fifth through July nineteenth, two thousand fifteen. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Carmen, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Finesse.
Yes. Let the record reflect nine in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. Public hearings? Public hearings, there are none. Communications. Any communications?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I'd just like to announce my sixteenth annual back-to-school giveaway that's going to be held at Martin Luther King Park on August 12th between Columbia and Lyons, the center of the park. Starts at 10:00 a.m. until supplies last, sponsored by yours truly, Councilman Higgs. Sixteen years of giving back to the children of this city.
Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications are now closed. Committee reports. We had no committee reports this evening, but I do have a couple of announcements from the Community and Crime Watch Committee. We have a couple of upcoming meetings. The Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will meet Tuesday, July 25th, 6:30 p.m. at the American Legion on Goslin. The Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, August 10th at Calumet College, and that begins at 6:30. Also coming up on August 1st is National Night Out. The Community and Crime Watch groups partner with Mayor McDermott and the city of Hammond to host this crime and drug prevention event at the Wolf Lake Splash Pad. It will be from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. In addition to distributing a lot of safety information to our residents and particularly our children, there will be a lot of fun events for everyone. We'll have the Pop Whiting Train, fingerprinting for the children, a drunk-driving simulator, police and fire vehicles will be on display, the sheriff's helicopter will be there, weather permitting, face painting, line dancing, a magician, door prizes. Our charity this year is the American Red Cross. So, if you bring a donation of toothpaste, bar soap, shampoo, shave cream, you kind of get the idea, you will receive a free hot dog chips and pop. Once again, that is Tuesday, August 1st, and that is at the Wolf Lake Splash Pad. Also, Edison Community Watch is proud to partner with the Eastside Community Council and the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch on Saturday, August 12th. There is a back-to-school event that will be from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. There will be horse rides, food, drinks, and for the first hundred attendees, they'll receive a backpack with school supplies. That will be at Memorial Park, again, August 12th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. So, bring the children so they can get a ride on the pony and get some school supplies. Because community is not just about me, it's about us. That concludes committee reports. Moving on to introduction of ordinances.
Seventeen eighteen, an ordinance, amending ordinance number ninety-three seventy-nine, being an ordinance, amending and fixing the schedule of sewer rates and charges to be collected by the Hammond Sanitary District from the owners of property served by the sewage works of the district.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
I would ask for suspension of the rules. I'll let Marty Wilgas, the superintendent, to approach us and explain the changes here. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs to suspend the rules. Boarding for Marty Wilgas to address the council. Carmen, roll call vote, please. I keep wanting to call you Clerk Golick. I'm sorry.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed. Marty Wilgas. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm embarrassed to have to come in front of this council for a third time, but I'm here to tell you that there was a mistake made on the ordinance that you had passed. All of the handout materials, the public notice that was put in the paper had all of the right information, but there was a mistake on one of the numbers that was put into your ordinance, and that's for our industrial users and their contamination rate that they pay a surplus on. What was put into the ordinance was twenty-one cents. It should have been thirty-one cents. And so, that's what we're doing today, is correcting that mistake. And it only involves the industrial client. It has no effect on the residential, has no effect on commercial. So, I'm asking for your favor to do that tonight, and I hope that we can do that. Once again, I apologize, but as district manager, I take full responsibility for that. I know the mayor has been embarrassed by that. We've had several conversations in his office, but at the end of the day, I'm a district manager, and I'm not going to be pointing fingers at different people, because that doesn't really accomplish anything. It really stops with me. And I, I've been gracious to have three sponsors that started with me on this from the very beginning, and they have been very patient with me, but I know your patience is running out, and I truly understand that. So, I ask for all of you tonight to pass the correction of the twenty-one cent charge to thirty-one cents, which is now in that correction ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion or comments? We'll entertain a motion to return to the regular order of business.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs to return to the regular order of business. Carmen, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Nine in favor, zero opposed. So, we have before us ordinance number seventeen eighteen, motion by Councilman, did you make a motion to?
No, not yet.
No? Okay.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman.
Make a motion for first and second reading for seventeen dash eighteen. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs for first and second reading of seventeen eighteen. Any discussion?
Call for the vote.
Any discussion? Councilman, Councilman called to, called for the vote. Carmen, roll call vote to call for the vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Seventeen eighteen passes on first and second reading.
Madam Chairlady.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for suspension of rules for seventeen dash eighteen. I so move.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules for final passage of seventeen eighteen. Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs. Carmen, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Seventeen eighteen passes on first and second reading.
Madam Chairlady.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for suspension of rules for seventeen dash eighteen. I so move.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules for final passage of seventeen eighteen. Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs. Carmen, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Seventeen eighteen passes, a final passage. Councilman Markovich, return to regular order of business.
Motion to return to regular order of business.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs to return to the regular order of business. Carmen, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Seventeen eighteen passes on first and second reading.
Madam Chairlady.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for suspension of rules for seventeen dash eighteen. I so move.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules for final passage of seventeen eighteen. Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs. Carmen, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Madam, Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman.
Move for final approval and adoption of seventeen dash eighteen. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs for final passage of seventeen eighteen. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Emerson.
I move to amend Resolution seventeen hour dash twenty-eight.
And the amendment?
The amendment, in sum, I am...
Point of order.
Councilman Higgs.
There's a motion on the floor. It has to be a second, and then you go into discussion.
Thank you. Is there a second for an amendment? I, we don't know what the amendment is.
We don't know an amendment.
I think the, I think the motion should include what the amendment is. Okay. Councilman Emerson, would you like to restate your motion?
Absolutely. The amendment will include two points, basically, that no whistleblowing crossings in all residential neighborhoods. Actually, in the fourth, that would include one hundred and sixty-fifth and one hundred and seventy-third street, and no freight is to be carried on the West Lake Extension project. That is the crux of the amendment.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Emerson to amend seventeen hour twenty-eight with no whistleblowing and no freight. Is there a second? Mr. Mayor?
Madam Chair, I could tell you that, first off, whistleblowing, I believe, is covered under federal law, okay? I don't know if we can make that promise, even if it was in our resolution, all right? I had about five lawyers poring through this document that's before you right now. If we change it on the floor, we're going to have to delay, we're going to have to have lawyers looking at it, making sure anything we do today is going to be okay with them. But this, this, the document's been changed a number of times. It was negotiated, hard bargain for. Everything I've heard, first off, in regards to freight, everybody tells me there's no possibility of freight at all. So, I don't know if that hurts or helps by adding it to this document, but if there is freight, I'd be concerned as well. From what I've heard, there is no freight to be involved in this. So, secondly, I don't know if we could say no whistles. I don't know if we could say that, because I know that to have a whistle-free zone, you have to have protections built into the tracks. They have to be double-sided. They have to be medians in it. I don't know if we could say that. So, like, if we do this, we're going to have to table it, and we're going to have to go back to the drawing board for a couple of weeks and make sure everything we're talking about is going to be okay.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor by Councilman Emerson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Markovich to amend seventeen hour twenty-eight with no whistleblowing and no freight.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman.
Discussion.
Yes.
I can concur with the mayor said, you know, as far as changing anything, and I can understand where Councilman Emerson's coming from, being that it's in his district. And what the mayor said, whether we have five or ten or twenty lawyers looking at this and making changes, I mean, probably what we should do then is table this and probably have a public hearing, so we can get this all out on the table, out on the floor, and make sure everybody's got all their questions answered and so forth. And then, you know, something of this magnitude, just doing this tonight and strapping, you know, for twenty, well, not twenty-seven million, it'd be thirteen and a half million now for thirteen years, or thirty years. And being that Congress, as far as we know, is not going to have the money, they're talking about, you know, whether it's going to be funded or not in this budget or next year's or so forth. So, I don't think another two weeks is going to make a big difference, whether we pass this tonight or whatever. But to have a public hearing and allow the public and what have you, and then questions like Councilman Emerson, what he has, I mean, let's, let's get him answered. And I can concur with the mayor as far as whistles and so forth and all of that, whether we can do that, because that's a safety issue. And if for some reason the gates don't come down, they don't work, you know, you're still going to want them putting their horns out there and let people know so that the train is coming.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
You know, we, we got to do what we got to do here, but, you know, these last-minute drop-ins, you know, I, I respect Councilman Emerson very much. I know Councilman Emerson voted against the original resolution when we passed this council. We had a public hearing during that session where a number of people showed up, including the congressman himself. Congressman himself, standing before you on the record, said there will be no freight. It was very clear, okay? Well, actually, no, that day, congressman had...
He didn't know.
But he, you're right. And then, since then, the congressman has made it clear. True story. But, I mean...
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Emerson.
You know, I will, I will withdraw my amendment if I can, but make the request to the gentlemen that are here tonight that these two things do happen, because the calls I have gotten about the station, well, number, that's a whole other issue. I'll talk about that discussion. But I will withdraw it and make sure that they hear the request for whatever we have to do to have no whistles. And I, I believe there'll be no freight, but, you know, so I withdraw it.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
You know, first off, if you're reading closely the resolution, there is stipulations in there that says if we're going to pay the money, first off, the gateway project has to be included. That's the project in Councilman Torres's district. It's just to the southern border of Councilman Kelwinski's district. Second thing is the freight yard has to be included. The rail yard has to be included. That's at the OK Champion Facility. That's located in Mr. Torres's district. Third is, we wouldn't start to pay until the FTA approves this project, okay? That could occur six months or a year down the road. Lake County, for instance, has been paying for the last three years into it. Ours wouldn't kick in until this was approved. There is no mention whatsoever of the South Hammond Station. I know Councilman Emerson has a lot of concerns, as do the residents down there. So, we chose as a city, as an administration, to take no position on that, because quite frankly, I personally don't feel like it's necessary. Nick D feels otherwise. Nick D feels like this is a very important station. I respect them. They know the train business way more than I do. We didn't even mention the South Hammond Station in this resolution. If you notice, there's no mention at all. If Nick D came back and said, hey, mayor, you want to save ten million dollars and not have this station, it wouldn't break my heart. I don't think that's the best location for a station personally. So, adding these stipulations isn't really even consistent with the resolution, because there's no mention of the South Hammond Station in the resolution. But I do understand where Councilman Emerson's coming from, you know, whistleblowing and trains is a big deal. I definitely am not interested in freight, and I trust the congressman when he tells us straight up that it's not going to be included. He's said that since that council meeting.
Okay. So, Councilman Emerson, you rescind your, your motion?
I'm ope to rescind.
Okay.
Madam Chairman.
We are still under discussion. Yes, Councilman Torres.
You know, if we could find a way, I, I remember this been discussed years, years ago. I, I have all the trains going through my district, South Shore and all of that. And being a safety issue that they have to blow that whistle so many feet from the intersection or the crossing.
Point of order, though, real quick.
I don't...
You have to rescind your second.
No, we're still under discussion.
Yeah, we're still under discussion.
He just made a motion to go ahead and withdraw his thing, but we're still under discussion.
But anyway, if there is a way to stop whistleblowing and have silent zones, if we can research that later, I'm up for it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I appreciate Councilman Torres and Councilman Emerson's recommendation on the whistle zone, all right? But to make the money contingent, like, to make it contingent, like our ordinance has three specific things that Nick D and RDA must do for us to participate. And I don't think it's fair to them to make a... And I don't think it's fair to them to make a whistle zone part of the contingencies. We're just, we could add all kinds of things to the contingencies, and it's gonna make it impossible for them to meet all of them.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
Besides that, I mean, the reality of it is, I mean, look at it. If you want trains to enter into intersections and where crossings are coming, and say, for instance, one of those crossings don't come down, you don't want the whistles to blow? People's lives could be at risk if they don't blow them. I mean, it's, it's, it's a safety issue. You gotta look at it both ways.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Just a final point. You should drive out to Dyer and Sherrville sometimes, 'cause they have no whistle zones out there. Those trains go fast, Councilman.
Oh, Lord.
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes.
Councilman Emerson's right. To improve an, uh, a rail intersection, to make it a whistle-free zone requires big money per intersection. You have to do a lot of things. And I know Whiting, for instance, has a, or a football field, but they had to do the medians. They had to do the double-sided gates. They have to do a lot of investment to make it a whistle-free stop and, so. But like, to make that part of the contingencies, I think it's unfair. And it's not part of, like, I, whether you like it or not, and if you don't agree with the deal that I struck on behalf of the city, then you have every right to shoot it down. That's the right of the council. I think it would be unfair if I struck a deal with the RDA, and then we started adding more and more contingencies to the deal that we came up with. I don't think it'd be fair to the RDA, because we struck a deal. And if it's not a fair deal, if you don't agree with it, then shoot it down, and we'll start over again. I think that's the fairest way to approach it. I can't really look Mister Hannah in the face after shaking hands with them, saying, "This is what I'm gonna present to the council", if we start adding contingency after contingency to it.
Thank you.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman.
I, I know we talked about this, but there are obviously several people here that probably wanna talk, and in all due respect to them, we probably should have a public hearing at the next meeting, at least give the opportunity for the people to go ahead and talk, and not pass this tonight. And it wouldn't be fair to go ahead and pass this without them at least having a chance to speak, and not just allowing them to speak tonight, because we've got a handful. But if this was moved for another two weeks, and we're not under any time restraint here, maybe more than six people might show up, then we're. Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
This issue was brought up on a resolution form, a meeting before I became on this council. And that night, this council approved the mayor to spend up to nine hundred thousand dollars of CEDIT money on this project. There was a public hearing about it. There was, I think that meeting went on for an hour or so. At least there was public discussion about it. We have before us a resolution that is committing fifteen percent of the CEDIT money rather than thirty-three percent. I don't see no need to table this now.
Okay. So, uh, where we are, Councilman, uh, Markovich needs to rescind his second on the amendment.
Further discussion, please.
Uh, Councilman Markovich.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know if the mayor committed nine hundred thousand dollars a year, because if that was the case, we wouldn't even be here right now. They would've got their nine hundred thousand dollars, just like all the other cities and towns that voted to go along with it.
Madam Chair.
We, we never committed to that. We committed to two hundred and twenty-five or two hundred fifty thousand dollars to do an environmental impact study. I don't recall that this council voted on to approve that nine hundred thousand dollars. And if I'm wrong, then I need to be corrected.
I, I'm not saying we voted to approve it.
Councilman Warple.
I'm not saying we voted to approve it. I'm just saying that we, I think we gave the resolution for him to negotiate.
Up to nine hundred thousand.
Right.
Uh, yes, Mister Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Councilman Markovich is right. We gave two hundred fifty thousand dollars to an environmental impact study early on. Uh, it was recommended by Congressman Wiskowski that each city and town throughout Lake County donate thirty-four percent of what was then known as CEDIT towards this project, but very, very few municipalities have followed that recommendation. It, um, quite frankly, a lot of shockingly low numbers, uh, including along the rail line. For instance, Dyer, it's a very shockingly low amount, just fifty thousand dollars a year, which is a very small percentage. It's, it's a pittance compared to what Dyer's gonna get in return. Munster did the full thirty-four percent, um, but then again, Munster doesn't donate to the RDA, and that's where my problem was all along, is we're giving three point five million dollars to the RDA, which is gonna be over the next thirty years, a hundred and five million dollars, and that should count towards our contribution, which is what I maintained all along. We started at zero in Hammond. Mister Hannah and the RDA started at thirty-four percent. We sat down and ironed it out. And I think, for what Hammond's getting in return, if the gateway's in it, if the rail yard's in it, and if the FTA approves this project, I think it's a huge project for our city. I think it's a huge project for the first and the second district. I don't have a better project lined up in the second district right now than this one. I think it's worth it for us to contribute. And I think we made it, I think I made, on behalf of the city, a fair deal. I think the RDA feels that it was a fair deal. I think Nick D. feels it is a fair deal. I, I, I described it as, we walked away, everybody was sort of pissed off, excuse my language. I was upset, 'cause I felt like we gave too much, in addition to what we already gave. I think Mister Hannah and Mister Nolan walked away thinking we gave too little. Usually those are pretty good deals, when everybody walks away a little unhappy. I feel like I made a fair deal. I feel like we shook hands, and as a man of my word, I'm bringing that deal to you all for ratification. If you don't think it's a fair deal, I'm asking you to shoot it down, okay? And then we'll go back to the drawing board. But I think it's a fair deal. I think if we had a private investor coming to Hammond spending thirty million dollars on a gateway station, and hundreds of millions of dollars in new investment, I think we'd give them money. I know we would. We did it with Lear. We would do it with, and it just so happens this is a politically charged issue. And quite frankly, one that's been talked about for the better part of the last two years, every single day on WJOB, in The Times, in The Post Tribune, on Go Hammond TV. This has been talked about. I mean, if Councilman Markovich moves for a public hearing, God bless him, if it passes, God bless, okay? But this has been talked about. I can almost tell you to the person what they're gonna say when they come up here, okay? Because we've heard it twenty times already, all right? If you wanna delay another two weeks, that's on you, okay? But this is the deal we struck. I feel good about it personally as mayor, and if you don't think I made a good deal, you have the right to shoot it down.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Madam Chairlady.
Uh, Councilman Markovich.
I withdraw my second.
Thank you. Okay. So, we have before us seventeen R twenty-eight for final passage, and I assume there is no more discussion.
Madam Chairlady.
Councilman Markovich.
I'd like to make a motion for a public hearing on August fourteenth, twenty seventeen. I still move. Public hearing on August fourteenth, next council meeting.
There's a motion on the floor for a public hearing August fourteenth. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, before we get into this, that is a three-week delay. I know for a fact our DA is pushing to get this thing filed. I think a three week is unreasonable. I think if you're gonna actually entertain a motion to delay this, I think it's reprehensible that we're waiting three more weeks. I think it's reprehensible. If you're gonna do it, Councilman Markovich, then get him here in a couple of days, okay? This is reprehensible. If you guys are gonna delay a project of this magnitude for three weeks, a CEO would walk out that door and say, "Screw Hammond." I know they would.
Madam Chairlady, point of order.
Councilman Mark.
Before we have any discussion, we need a second, and if there's no second, then the motion will die.
Uh, I understand that. So, uh, we're looking for a second on, uh, Councilman Markovich's , uh, motion to have a public hearing on August fourteenth. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman.
I, again, I call for the final passage of seventeen R twenty-eight.
Second.
Uh, Carmen Rolco votes please for final passage of seventeen R twenty-eight.
Markovich.
No.
Spitali.
Yep.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Uh, seventeen R twenty-eight passes, eight in favor, one opposed. That concludes resolutions. Uh, moving on to new and unfinished business.
Madam President.
Just Councilman Higgs.
I'd like a letter sent to the Public Works in regards to cutting the weeds and cleaning up near the railroad tracks from Fayette all the way down to, I think that is, I would say, Holman Avenue. I still move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs to have a letter sent to Public Works regarding the weeds, uh, on Fayette from where?
Calumet Avenue all the way to Holman.
From Calumet to Holman.
Second.
Uh, second by Councilman Torres. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, aye, opposed. Motion carries. Uh, any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Emerson.
I just wanted to, uh, thank, uh, everybody that came out to the Festival of the Lakes. Uh, a lot of people worked very hard. Everyone was very courteous. Uh, people just seemed to go out of their way to, to make it enjoyable. I didn't go every night, but the nights I was there, uh, everybody seemed to, uh, really work hard and made it enjoyable for everyone. And that's not just the bands, but, uh, the carnival and the, and the polka day and the fishing, you know, all the things that go on. So, just wanted to get that out there.
And, uh, I will piggyback on that. Uh, this morning, six-thirty, I was hanging banners for National Night Out up at the, uh, splash pad, and the street sweeper was out cleaning up already at the splash pad. So, uh, kudos to everyone with the city who worked so very hard to make the festival, uh, just wonderful. Over a hundred thousand people came to our city, and, uh, and it was, uh, a very nice, uh, event to show off, um, the amenities in our city. So, thank you to all our city employees. Um, any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Yes, Councilman.
I was a little slow on the, on the last discussion. I know it's new and unfinished, but I did want to, uh, compliment, and they're gone now, but the people that worked on the, uh, the, uh, negotiation, uh, thus far for the train. You know, I was the only one a year ago that voted no, uh, on the council, and that it was twice as expensive as, as it is tonight. So at some point, uh, this may or may not happen, but I think to, to continue to stand, uh, against it is that, that, that train's leaving the station, no pun intended.
Uh, any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression. Uh, the first speaker of the evening is Julie O'Connor. Uh, ma'am, you will have, uh, three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Uh, my name is Julie O'Connor. Uh, I have an address at four-three-four South Street in Munster, Indiana. Um, uh, along with my neighbor Pam Eens, who was here earlier, we formed and lead the Concerned Families of the West Lake Corridor Project Neighborhood Group, which provides information and resources to members of the communities, uh, through which the proposed train that we just talked about will run, as well as advocates for fair treatment of residents and input into the decision-making process. Um, today I'm here to let you know that Nick D. recently confirmed that it will begin the property acquisition process, uh, as early as this fall, um, well before it receives confirmation of an award of federal funding. Um, in fact, at a meeting of residents on June twenty-ninth, Mr. Nolan stated that Nick D. could end up acquiring, uh, homes and displacing, displacing residents, even if it never receives federal funding and the project never gets built due to a lack of federal funds. Um, as you know, um, in May two thousand seventeen, the FTA put forth its two thousand eighteen budget request, uh, denying federal funds to all New Starts projects that do not yet have a full funding grant agreement, um, which includes the West Lake Corridor Project. It does not have that agreement. Uh, the FTA further stated in its budget request that future investments in new transit projects would be funded by the localities that use and benefit from these localized projects, um, indicating that the federal government is unwilling to provide this funding in the future. Federal funding for the West Lake Corridor Project could be said to be hanging by a shoestring. Um, more than one hundred property owners in Hammond, uh, as well as Munster and Dyer could potentially lose their homes even if the project dies. Um, seizing private property through the eminent domain process should be the option of last resort. It should not be done on the hope that the project will be funded. It is wrong to allow Nick D. to displace more than one hundred of your constituents on speculation. Uh, on behalf of these constituents, some of which are, some of which are here with me tonight, my neighbors and fellow residents, uh, the people whose local taxes are making this project possible, uh, I'm asking for your help. Uh, I'm asking the City of Hammond what you would need from us, uh, in order to issue a resolution to Nick D. or some other remedy directing them to abstain from any property acquisitions until they receive that full funding grant agreement, and until they are assured of receiving the federal funds that they need to successfully move forward with the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next speaker of the evening is Donna Dunn. You will have three minutes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
Hello. My name is Donna Dunn. I live at twenty-eight thirty-seven, one hundred and seventy-first Street in Hammond. I've come before this body before, uh, to talk about, to talk to you about the West Lake Extension. As, as some of you may remember, I do work in the railroad industry, although I do not work for the South Shore. Um, one of the things I did wanna clarify about crossings and the, the, uh, whistles at crossings. As an engineer, I've been through many cities, and South Bend is a big one, where they don't allow, uh, you to blow your horn. The way that works is the mayor is absolutely correct. You have to have double gates, and, and, uh, depending on the traffic and how much traffic goes through there, you may have to have a median in the middle. The way it works, as, from the engineer's standpoint, is when you come up to a crossing and you notice the gates, of course, if you're going forty miles an hour, you're not gonna be able to stop before the, before, before you know, when you notice the gates aren't coming down. You radio that to your dispatcher. The dispatcher passes that on to all the trains that come after you, and it is a federal law that you must stop and flag that crossing if the gates are not working. So that, the first train through there is the only one that will, is the one that will notice it. So there is that, that, that chance for an accident there. But as an engineer, from an engineer's standpoint, I don't like going through silent crossings, because people go around the gates all the time. They find a way, especially if they're not working. But I also wanted to talk to you about the NIP, uh, the South Shore possibly taking people's homes before federal funding is, is established. And that has happened in the past. It has happened in many locations throughout the country. There was recently, and as far as night, as, uh, a Supreme Court decision of Kelo versus the City of New London in Connecticut, where the federal government took people's homes to establish a Pfizer plant. The plant was never built. Ninety acres of people's homes are gone, and there's nothing there. There was another, that was, that, that fight went all the way up to the Supreme Court, and the people lost. They lost their homes. They lost everything. There was another one out, right outside of Boston, where eminent domain was also used to take people's homes for a shopping mall. The shopping mall was in two thousand eight. The shopping mall was never built. Another, I think it's ten to fifteen acres, people's homes are gone. So this is, that's a very real possibility that people in our neighborhoods and in our, and in your districts could lose their homes, and the project never gets built. We, right now, we don't have a thumbs up or a thumbs down from the FTA, and I implore you to, whatever we need to do to draw resolutions, request that the South Shore not take anyone's home until they get federal funding. Please, don't let anybody lose their homes and turn our neighborhoods into nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mike Swiger. Please state your name and address, please.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Mike Swiger. I live at sixty-seven thirty here on Avenue, uh, here in Hammond. And I wanted to speak briefly about the, um, five thousand dollar claim that was, uh, put in and subsequently pulled. Uh, thank you, counsel, for, uh, for catching that, and Councilman Warple for, uh, requesting that claim be pulled. Uh, and the reason I say that, the concern that I, I think we should, we'd all have, is that there, there's no specific itemization of what hours are, are being, uh, being worked and, and what services are being provided, um, by that legal agency, uh, to the City of Hammond, to the court, and, and that is by the, by the expression of, uh, the judge. It's, it's a net cost. It's basically, it sounds like a, like a prepaid legal service, where they could work a hundred hours, they could work zero, and we're on the hook for the same thing. So that, that, that claim presents a possibility that the city might be paying for nothing, or might be paying for something, but it's not defined. And until there is such a definition, I definitely think the city shouldn't have to, uh, pay that money. And it also represents to me a, a, a potential conflict of interest. Um, we're, we're talking about the possibility of the court suing the, the, uh, council, uh, over, over this outstanding matter. So then that presents the possibility, maybe not a certainty, but the possibility that, uh, part, or all of that money could be going to sue the city, which then I, I think raises questions that, that this council may wanna ask its own legal advisor about, is can it be put in a compulsory position to have to basically fund the attorneys that are going to be suing it? And, and that's of great concern, so. that are going to be suing it, a, and, and that's of great concern, so, again, I really appreciate, uh, the council on, on that claim, looking out for the welfare of all the taxpayers of Hammond, thank you, good evening.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joe Hero. Please state your name and address, sir.
Joe Hero, one-one-seven-two-three South Oakridge Drive, St. John, Indiana, first of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight, uh, being from another community, uh, I was impressed with the caucus you had before the meeting, there was a lot of civility there, you put everything on the table, you talked to the railroad guys, you got input, good decisions, whether you're for or against, I think, are made, so I wanna compliment you for that, but don't count that as my three minutes, that's a compliment. The, my reason to speak is simply this, is, is I watched Councilman Warple raise the issue of paying a bill tonight of five thousand dollars, and I heard constitutional issues, constitution, constitution, I would like to ask you, as the councilman, no matter which side of whatever topics you're on, it has nothing to do with whether the court goes or stays, I think what's important is that you look at the Indiana Constitution, Article Six, Section Six, if you would take that down and write that down, Article Six, Section Six, and the reason that's very critical is then you look at a court case called Gleason versus Gerdinck, G-E-R-D-I-N-K, and in there, they do the construction of that Constitution, Article Six, Section Six, where the word is used town in that Constitution, and it says town equals city, so for that reason, I think that applies to Hammond, Indiana, and I think what you then have to do is, it, it goes to residency of public officials, uh, that serve, okay? And I think one of the things you then have to look at, uh, and by the way, the site for Gleason versus Gerdinck is ninety, northeast, seventy, then I would look at Title Three of the Indiana Election Code, and it establishes what residency requires, residency where it talks, where does your family live, and I think if you would examine all of that, and then there was a case where the Secretary of State was removed, Charlie White, I think you should look at all the surrounding stuff of residency regarding that case, um, as you all know, you were Secretary of State, got removed, and I think that is important in your decision-making, on how you approach the issue of what bills get paid, uh, that Mr., Councilman, I'm sorry, I'll call him the chairman, too, brought up, I think it's critical that you have your attorneys look at those items that I cited for you, and determine which direction you're gonna go in in the future, and I thank you very much for allowing me to speak, the first public meeting I ever came to was here, so, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker is George Stoya.
George Stoya, Robertsdale, um, I just wanted to, uh, give the mayor some credit, uh, because there's one thing that no one talks about in the newspaper article that talked, that first announced this change in the railroad funding, uh, he mentioned the idea of compromise, and to me, that demonstrates the objectivity I've been looking for in our public officials, uh, with respect to compromise, you can't compromise unless you're, unless you're objective, and that's, I believe, what you guys are elected to be, objective, and so I just wanted to thank the mayor, 'cause nobody talks about compromise, we're so ideologically, uh, locked in this battle anymore, that no one can see beyond their own ideology, and, and, and get a clear look at what's coming down the pike, and act on behalf of the people, I know that sounds a little bit idealistic, but so what? That's what I'm, that's what I'm contending. As to the judge and her court, I'd like to reiterate, I think that's a political question, I don't think that there's any subject matter jurisdiction for a court, uh, to assume jurisdiction, and, given that it's a political issue, and with respect to this proposed complaint, I think that since the judge has alleged fault of some kind, some sort of blame, that, instead of, uh, drafting a proposed complaint, let her submit a memo, as, uh, Mr. Hero was outlining, let them make the argument, she alleges fault, she has the burden of proof, let them write a memo, let's get everything, all the cards out on the table, present her case, make her arguments, cite her authority, all these claims, you guys gotta look it up, no, no, you make the argument, you're alleging that there's fault here, then you make the argument, your honor, and, or, Mr. Hero, he's an attorney, I understand, let him make the arguments, state your position, and, uh, with respect to that Gleason case, ninety, northeast, seventy, that's probably nineteenth century, guys, you gotta jeopardize that, if, if you find yourself looking it up, it's old, so, don't know that it's still, uh, good precedent, it might be, it's Indiana after all, so, um, let's see here, yeah, I'd rather see a legal memorandum on a proposed complaint, thank you.
Alrighty, thank you very much, public expression is now closed.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali, uh, to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good evening, everyone.